Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Hunt, call the April 2nd, 2024 meeting of the Council Planning, Development and Environment Committee to order. I am Councilmember Hunt, and I'm here tonight with Council President Walsh. Councilmember Hall, who is a member of this committee, has an excused absence this evening. On our agenda tonight, we have one item of regular business, and we also will have an opportunity for public comment. And we will start this evening with public comments. I will first check in if there are any members of the public on our virtual call.
Chair Hunt, we have no virtual attendees at this time.
Okay. And I will note that I don't believe we have any members of the public that are in the audience. So we will go past public comments, and we'll go to the approval of minutes. There are minutes of the February 6th, 2024, meeting of this committee. Do we have any edits or corrections? All right, then I move to approve those. If you approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, those are approved. And then we will go to our one item of business, which is COM 0021, Local Amendments Related to Wildfire and the Wildland Urban Interface Code and the State Building Code. This is presented by James Gray, our building official. James, welcome.
Thank you, Council President, and Chair Hunt for having us here tonight. So we're here tonight to talk about local amendments to the Wildland Urban Interface Code. And before I start, I'd like to also introduce our colleagues from Eastside Fire and Rescue. We have Greg Bowden and Jeremy Hicks, and also our city emergency manager, Jared Snyder. Just a moment. So again, local amendments related to the Wildland Urban Interface Code. So we have 29 slides. I'm going to try to get through them rapidly so we have time for your questions tonight. We're looking for direction from the committee. Should we wait to adopt the Wildland Urban Interface Code until the State Building Board Council chooses to adopt the code, pursues to adopt the code? And then also, should we pursue our own wildfire hazard and risk assessment maps? Which we'll talk about in a little bit, why the risk assessment maps are so important. Our recommendation is to wait to follow the State Building Board Council's recommendation. And part of the reason for that is because there was some emergency action at the very end of the session related to the adoption of the Wildland Urban Interface Code, which we will talk about fairly shortly here. We also are recommending that we wait until Department of Natural Resources in King County finish their maps. There's a multi-governmental effort going on right now to create maps that address the wildland risk in Washington State and specifically in our area. So just a little background, on March 4th, the council adopted the Wildland Urban Interface Code. As councilmembers know, we were racing to meet the clock, to meet the March 15 deadline, as were all the cities in Washington State, frankly. And at that time, the State Building Board Council had adopted only the structural hardening portions of the Wildland Urban Interface Code, but the risk mapping pieces of it had not been addressed yet. And as a result, they allowed the cities to adopt their own maps, but because they'd adopted structural hardening, it was going to be mandatory after the map production happened, which hadn't happened yet. And so then on March 15th, they passed an emergency rule, which ended all of that. So it was too late. We had already done our adoption at the council level. So this Senate bill, the combined Senate bill, required DNR to develop and maintain these statewide wildfire risk maps. And no specific time frame was set to complete them, but they're thinking it's going to take about a year and a half. And the reason why this is so important, and we'll have some diagrams coming up, has to do with what you have to do with the structure and in what particular parts of the state you have to do it with that part of the structure. The maps that we previously had, the creation of the maps looked like it was primarily from some geospatial LiDAR data, and it was not super accurate or super specific, especially not for our community. And I talked about that when we went through the adoption process. And then it stipulated which portions of the SBCC that the SBCC had to complete, that the structural hardening pieces, which we can talk about in a little more detail. So none of this prohibits cities from doing their own adoption, either of portions of the Wildland Urban Interface Code, the entire thing, or none of it. So I'm going to share with my cohort, Jared Snyder, who's going to talk a little bit about wildfire risk and some of the mapping details.
Great, thank you, James. Good evening, Council President and Council Chair. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again today, talking about wildfire risk. So you may be asking yourself, you know, what's kind of led to this back and forth, right? With the WUI codes, it's been, you know, there's been a lot of twists and turns over the last few years. And really, what we wanted to do was just highlight why these code changes have been so challenging. And that's really coming down to, call it a tale, of two communities for Washington, right? We have our east-of-the-cascades communities and our west-of-the-cascade communities. And when we're talking about wildfire, they look very different. So west of the Cascades is characterized by wet forests, highly abundant, some of the most abundant forests in the world, while the east sides are dry forests, more sparsely, intermingled, and, you know, typically do not see the same level of rainfall or the density that we have here on the west side of the Cascades. And so what makes that hard, you know, when you're approaching it from a code standpoint, right, is like, how do you make sure it fits, you know, the needs of both communities? So keeping that context in mind, let's talk about what does our wildfire regime look like for west-side communities? So really, there's kind of two wildfire scenarios that we plan for and, you know, take action against. And one is the brush fires, which brush fires are relatively common. They happen quite frequently, including, you know, within our own EFER service district. I have a slide or a picture pulled here from 2021 of a brush fire outside of Maple Hills community. It was a 30-acre brush fire, and yeah, EFER tackled it and addressed that fire pretty rapidly, right? So the other type of fire that we're looking at is what you see on the right side of your screen, and that is a diagram of the 1902, I believe, Yakult Burn. And this is kind of our other fire-type scenario. It's these large fires. In this case, it was hundreds of thousands of acres, very fast-moving. It traveled, I think, 36 miles in 36 hours. So a very quick wildfire is driven by east dry winds, which is really the thing that raises the hair on the back of our necks in terms of wildfire risk for our communities. If we see these dry, high-east fire winds, coupled with, you know, a low snowpack, dry fuels, hot day, that's really what we worry about in terms of wildfire risk for our communities. And, you know, the situation on the right there, where you've seen that map, that particular fire actually claimed the lives of 38 to 65 people back when this happened. And the reason I'm highlighting that is because we, too, are trying to balance, you know, both these two types of wildfire scenarios, right? One was much more common, low severity, and then, yeah, we have these, what they are sometimes deemed as mega fires, right, on the right. And for our east-side communities, on the dry side of the state, they're kind of in between. They're somewhere in the middle of both those scenarios typically. Moving on, just going to talk a little bit more about what kind of makes this so challenging, too, and specifically with the vegetation management, because I know that's been something that, you know, we want to dive into a little bit more. And I pulled a quote from the King County Wildfire Risk Reduction Strategy, which was published in 2022, and it reads, "Unfortunately, no amount of property or vegetation management can completely eliminate wildfire risk, particularly in the case of large wind-driven wildfire events." And that's just a reality of the forest that we live in. What you'll see on the right there is really just an illustration of our dry forest neighbors and, you know, our very abundant forests. And also want to highlight, too, how, you know, there's been some mention about how fire suppression can actually make the problem worse for wildfires. And that's particularly true on the east side of the community, for east-side communities. For us, it doesn't really make a difference as much, because, like I said, our forests are so productive that typically, you know, vegetation will be back before we know it, right? If you've tried to walk off trail in any of our forests, you can discover pretty quickly, you know, just how dense they are, right? And so all that's to say, you know, I just kind of want to highlight, again, the climate and the environment that, you know, Isqwa finds itself in, and just kind of differentiate between our communities on the east side of the state. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back to James. I'll be back later.
Thank you, Jared. So there's mandatory and non-mandatory provisions of the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Mandatory provisions that are in the State Building Code Council only take effect after the mapping is complete, and that's the DNR mapping that's been directed by the legislation we referenced earlier. Those are structural hardening requirements. So these have to do with, and we talked about this on March 4th, I'll just go over it quickly. Structural hardening has to do with the fire rating of the siding on the outside of the building, the roof class. It has to do with eliminating ventilation, eave ventilation, which is something that we're really debating pretty heavily in the building official community, because it's a problem in our wet climate. And we're trying to reconcile how we get around eliminating all this eave ventilation and putting a bunch of holes in the roof, which we don't like in wet country either, because this is one of our problems. And then deck construction, six-by-six construction or non-combustible decks. So a deck would need to be built out of six-by-six members, minimal. The girder members would have to be a minimum two inches. So we're not talking about one-by-sixes, but we're talking about two-inch, almost like heavy timber. And then underneath the deck, screening to prevent embers from going, depending on how high it is. So the six-by-six members is not the biggest problem, but it's how you brace that. You typically brace those with a 45-degree member. While you're not screwing through a six-by-six, if you can picture that in your traditional construction method, now we're talking about manufactured brackets and bolt-through. It's very different deck construction, which, of course, we can get to if we have to, but this is, there's a price for that. If we wish to enforce a non-mandatory provision such as defensible space, we would need to adopt some or all of the WUI pursuant to RCW 1924. So again, properties in the Wildland Urban Interface or intermix areas as defined by the current map that we have, and we have determined that the entire city is urban interface and intermix. So that means all of these provisions would apply to the entire city, except for water. Yeah. So they address fire spread, accessibility, defensible space, water supply, and more for buildings that are located in those areas. We have provisions to safeguard property from the intrusion of wildland fire and prevent structure fires spreading to wildland fuels, and emergency access water supply and fire protection. So the biggest item that's difficult in this piece is defensible space. So I've included a diagram about the defensible space piece, and what it has to do with is how much area around a structure, and let's just say we're talking about a home for the purposes of this, has to be protected, and the vegetation has got to be removed. Now, vegetation is going to be vegetation in quotes, because there's different types that are flammable and less flammable, and then there are trees, and there are exceptions for trees. But what it means is if the WUI is adopted, and if we adopt the defensible space requirements, we would have to reconcile that against our tree canopy goals, our, against our several other pieces of city code that would be in conflict with it. So for instance, if we adopted the entire WUI, and we are in even the lowest of the risk categories, and you came in for a permit to add an addition onto your home, we would look at a site plan, and any trees that were in 30 feet of your home, tell you, you need to get rid of those. And so there are some exceptions that have to do with 10 feet from the tree crowns and power lines and property lines, but they're difficult. And you can see that in a couple of the next diagrams, a few of the next diagrams that I brought forward. So I pulled a few things from some Southern California communities that are actually doing this now. And the reason I did that, I wanted to see what this looks like on the ground. About a year ago, I was at the National Fire Academy near Washington, DC, and I was in a week-long class on the Wildland Urban Interface Code. And we talked to some folks there who do this on a full-time basis. They have fire enforcement officers who go door-to-door, knock on your door, not when there's a permit, but just knock on your door, and they say, hey, you've got this, all this vegetation around your structure, it needs to go. And then they've got a Senate bill in California that requires that you get that evaluation before you sell your property as a disclosure item. And this is kind of what the language looks like in their code. It's a misdemeanor citation, and it's got to be addressed, again, before you sell your property. If you do this, you've got it on your presentation. What does this look like on the ground? So this diagram gives you kind of a better idea of what we would be looking at, of how you would need to clear these structures out. So if you see this tree that's kind of on the front right-hand side of the diagram, and there's that 10-foot number, so the exception is the tree can be within that 30 feet, but the crown of the tree has to be separated by at least 10 feet from appendages on the structure. So what we're talking about are, you know, limbing trees up to an extent where you get that separation. Now, these zones in this diagram have to do with what risk category you were in. So if you're in high-risk, medium-risk, or low-risk, that would depend on the zone. And we don't know that yet, because we don't have the map. And this is an example of, I pulled this from Santa Barbara, this is their example of, here's what your home looks like. So this is, we want to make sure that council knows what this would look like on the ground if we adopt this. Right? So again, our policy question, should we wait to adopt the code until the State Building Code Council adopts the code? And should we pursue our own wildfire risk maps? So to the first policy question, should we wait to adopt the code? We talked about the last-minute legislation, that the staff recommendation is that we do wait to do that, and it's for a couple of reasons. The primary reason is that without the risk maps, we'd be using those old DNR maps, we pretty much would just have to default to we're in the highest-risk category. If we're in the highest-risk category, we'd have to take the most extreme position that's in the Wildland Urban Interface Code, which would be fairly extreme in terms of vegetation The other piece of that is that the map production is being pursued at the state DNR level. And Jared is going to talk in a minute about King County is producing, has got some direction to produce maps, and we apparently could get some funding to produce our own maps at a local level. So our second question has to do with the wildfire risk maps, and I'll turn that back over.
Thanks, James. All right. So our second policy question is here. Should the city pursue its own wildfire hazard and risk maps? So to kind of characterize what a wildfire risk map is and how it differs from the WUI maps that we've been talking about and that I think I've actually shown, you know, in previous presentations to you all, is really, risk maps include a few different elements, a few more elements, if you will. One is burn potential and fire intensity level. Really what this is, is includes vegetation, weather conditions, probability of fire containment. And then they'll take of those three factors and then run it through a simulation about 20 times to really spit out a simulation that, you know, gives a kind of a probabilistic effect of what a wildfire could look like in your community. Then they add exposure, which is just areas that are deemed to be susceptible to wildfire. So that's really our, those are our WUI maps. That's what that looks like. Likelihood, which is the potential for an area to burn in any given year. And then lastly, historical loss, right? So if anything has burned in the past, it also takes into account that. There we go. So as James alluded to, there's a few different options that we have when it comes to wildfire risk maps, and I want you to keep this in mind, you know, as we go through a few other slides. But DNR is going to be making their own wildfire maps. They said that they anticipate it will take about a year and a half. At that point, local jurisdictions will have six months to either adopt them or make something else that the state approves of. But they've also stated that there's an ability for us to, you know, weigh in on those maps, right, and to modify the maps that the state has created, which is exciting and a good option that they've offered. The second is, King County received a grant to create a community wildfire protection plan, and part of those plans is a risk map that will have to be developed in association with that plan. And, you know, of course, we'll want to take advantage of that planning opportunity and be involved in that planning process. Then lastly, the third option is, yes, as James alluded to, is procuring our own. So there's never been a local wildfire risk map made. Really, the national level is the most local level that's ever been done, you know, for Washington, right? And so what I wanted to do was just highlight a few different ways these risk maps have been played out in the past. And so right here is the United States Forest Service wildfire risk mapping. What it shows is pretty much what, you know, we've been talking about, right? You see that there is, you know, a relatively low wildfire risk, you know, to homes in Washington compared to the rest of the nation, but our exposure is really high, right? And that's just due to the nature of our vegetation. But again, you know, we're not as dry as California yet, right? If you're taking this moment in time, right, we're not there yet. Here's FEMA's National Risk Index. So this, they do on a county-wide level. What you see here is King County, you know, we're marked as a relatively low risk, also through in our neighboring counties, so we can kind of get a good feel for how we stack up. It shouldn't be a surprise that the communities east side of the mountains, you know, have a relatively high risk, while those on the west are lower. Lastly, this is Risk Factor, and this is essentially what private insurance companies will look at to make their decisions based on, you know, issuing policies to homeowners. They show Isqwa as having a less than 0.1% chance of a wildfire in 30 years. And so the reason I'm highlighting these, right, is because I just want to encourage us all in saying that we're still ahead of climate change, in a way. The fact that we are talking about these problems now is a good thing. You know, our risk will continue to go up. It's projected right now that we're going to have about nine more extreme wildfire risk days by 2050. Currently, we have about 11. So all that to say, you know, things are changing, they will change, but for now, our risk remains relatively low. I should also say, too, you know, we can expect that any of the state or county or even our own local procurement of one of these wildfire risk studies, I think we can expect to look fairly similar to what the outputs of these three studies are, only because the methodology has been pretty well ironed out, how to do wildfire risk maps, and there's only so much variance in weighting of the factors that can really affect the outcomes of them. To that effect, I just want to highlight a few of the things that I'll be doing in association with these mapping efforts. And one, I'm going to be tracking and participating where available and where I can within the state's process. The same is true for King County's process, you know, I'll participate in the planning there, and hopefully, you know, weigh in and represent our interests at the city level for the county one. And then lastly, too, I just want to say, too, I'll come before, you know, this group and council, you know, with the results of any map that is made, and, you know, provide a chance for you all to provide feedback on them. All right. I'll get you back up, James.
I think we're getting close to the end of the presentation. So for options, the committee can recommend to the full council that we not adopt the maps until the State Building Board Council adopts it, which is staff's recommendation. And the final DNR risk map, we choose to recommend to the council that we pursue the creation of wildfire risk map at the city level and subsequently adopt mandatory portions of the WUI to the full council. Or we can choose to recommend adoption of the entire Wildland Urban Interface Code, including the defensible space requirements, after the wildfire risk maps are available. And as we've stated, our recommendation is that we wait for the reasons that we've discussed, and also like have weight on the maps for Jared's activities to coordinate those three mapping efforts, so we don't duplicate an effort and do something that probably needs to happen at a higher level. And so for our timing, we're here tonight at the Planning, Development, and Development Committee meeting, and so we don't know what council meeting we would go to next. It just depends on what action the committee takes to take tonight and what that effective date. Additionally, we do need to come back to the full council with a couple of corrections to the code based on emergency legislation to the WUI, and there's also a correction in the fire code that we need to make corrections. And that's our direction. Should we wait to adopt the code until the State Building Board Council adopts it, and should we pursue our own wildfire hazard and risk reduction map? Presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We now have some time for our questions. Would you like to, Jared, questions? All right.
Okay. So just making sure I'm in the right space. We adopted the WUI code, but because the state made changes and because the maps aren't going to be available, that we're going to have to either take that back or it doesn't apply if we don't create our own maps. Is that correct?
It's a good question, Council President. We adopted only the structural hardening portions of the code, so we didn't adopt the defensible space pieces. But because the way the emergency legislation was written, LEGAL has given us advice that we need to roll that back and reword it, because we adopted it based on the creation of, based on the use of the maps that are already in place, and the emergency legislation made that mandatory after the new DNR maps are created. And we need to replicate that language in our own boards.
Okay. So LEGAL's recommendation, then, going forward, is that we'll roll back the hardening elements related to the WUI code. So if we don't adopt a map and wait until the state creates its map, where does that leave us as far as requirements or, you know, any kind of code related to the Wildland Urban Interface?
So the, where it would leave us is we wouldn't have a Wildland Urban Interface Code adopted, which many of the cities in Washington have, that's what they've done. They either waited to do their adoption and didn't adopt it, or they've rolled it back because of the emergency legislation. Frankly, the structural hardening requirements have problems, too. I think the feeling was that the structural hardening was sort of the camel's nose under the tent, and we get started. But there's problems with those, too, especially the ventilation piece. The roof piece of it, the siding piece of it, I've got no issue with that. I have a hard time with the ventilation piece, especially combined with the new energy code. You know, it's a different code and a different piece, but it's all getting tighter and tighter. And if I can, just for a moment, say something about that, the insulation in the attic requirement has gotten higher now. So it means the thickness is greater, which gets to where the ventilation is over the eaves. So builders are asking, how do I get that energy heal that I needed the heat at the eve for the energy code with that thickened insulation? And I'm like, okay, well, now we're also eliminating the ventilation at the eve. So there's some problems with the structural hardening piece, too. So kind of, my preference and several of my cohorts present, we'd kind of like to hold on that, too, until the dust settles on that piece.
Okay. Further questions on that, now that you've brought up the different elements of that? If there are areas of that, such as the metal roofs or certain exterior components, that we feel would be beneficial, could we adopt those in an interim time so that we don't have things built or remodeled in the next year and a half?
We could. As you were saying that, I was thinking, okay, we could go into the residential code and add those, and then I remembered, we can't do anything to the residential code based on the state law, that we can't, we can't tweak the residential code at all without the state building code. the state building code council's approval.
Yeah, because it's building code.
But we could adopt the structural hardening piece. Now, could we adopt the structural hardening piece and leave out the ventilation piece? We can't do that either, because the WAC says you can take the whole thing, you can take none of it, or you can take a piece of it, but you can't monkey with it.
Yeah.
The reality of the Class A roof piece of it is that the majority of roofs that go in now are Class A anyway. They, because to get the wind uplift resistance that is required for our wind piece, you're pretty much going to have a Class A roof. There's some cheap shingles that you can buy at places that don't meet that, but they won't meet our requirement for uplift. So the roof piece of it is not so much of a problem, and it's not necessarily a metal roof, because the modified bitumen roofs also can meet the Class A requirement. The exterior siding piece of it being, having the one hour on the exterior piece of it, all that hardy board siding already meets that stuff. And I think, as I stated before, I don't think a lot of folks are really doing the cedar siding anymore, because the cost of it and inconsistency of it and just the knots and all the rest of it. I could be wrong about that, but, and then your stucco type siding also meets that requirement already. But I think we're a lot of the way there in terms of the structural hardening. It's that ventilation piece that's really got a stick.
Okay. So we've got this one piece around structural hardening, which you're saying we can't monkey with, and because there's still some questions around there, plus the map wasn't adopted and created and may not be for a year and a half, that basically we're putting that to the side, or you're asking for our opinion and I'm referencing what your recommendation is. And then the defensible space requirements, we can't do without a map as well. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. We could do the defensible space based on the primary DNR maps that already came out that set the entire city as being interface and intermix. We could do that.
And then Jared, you had talked a little bit about the WUI maps being different from a wildfire hazard and risk maps, because they take into effect other things. So I just want to clarify, is what the state and King County working on, is that just WUI, Wildland Urban Interface, not hazard and risk?
No, they should be, they're going to be risk maps, so not just a recreation of the WUI maps. I should say, too, that, you know, this announcement was only about, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and so there's still a lot of questions, right, on what methodology they'll use or what factors they will include, and the same is true for the counties, too. You know, so unfortunately, I don't have that information, but we do know that they will be risk maps and not just a recreation of WUI maps.
My first question is similar, I think, to Council President's question. There was also parts of the code that I think we adopted that will now be rolled back that were about driveway turnarounds and other elements of design. Are those in the same kind of bucket where we can't really change those and their issues? Or are those something that we could adopt partially?
They are, Chair Hunt, they are in the same group of structural hardening. We do have turnaround requirements that are already in the code, but it's based on more units than just one. So this, the Wildland Urban Interface Code deals with the turnaround for a single, for a single unit, for a single building.
Okay, so in theory, would we be able to adopt that one part of the code with the existing maps or not?
Don't believe so. I have to ask legal, but I don't think we can take just that piece of it.
Okay. Okay, I think that would be good to clarify if there are pieces. I think from a lot of these questions you can get, we're thinking, how do we stay ahead of this issue as risk increases? So just knowing what our full options are, if there are pieces we could adopt based on the existing risk maps, that would be helpful without running into the issues that you mentioned about ventilation. Okay, so my second question is, if we were to pursue our own map, do you have a sense of what the cost would be in terms of bandwidth as well as cost?
Yeah, unfortunately, no, but I can find that information, too. The same is true for timing. I think the one estimate I heard was, you know, about a year it could take to develop your own, but I think it also, that depends on a lot of factors as well, too. So, but I can find that information.
That would also be good to know, if it's about a year, then I think their estimate is a year and a half.
Right.
Okay. All right. HOAs in Isiqua, some of them don't allow metal roofs and they don't allow certain aesthetic, for aesthetic reasons, they don't allow certain materials. Could we, I guess, what's the status of that, and would it be possible to require that HOAs allow for those materials to be used if the owner wants to use those materials?
I wouldn't know how to answer that question. Maybe my director can give me a better idea.
Yeah, you know, private covenants, there's limited things the cities can do for that. However, for the HOA boards, if there's a state law that is in conflict with their covenant restrictions, then they have to take the risk that someone could challenge. A homeowner in an HOA could say, your CCNRs are not legal, the state law was changed. So sometimes the HOAs are, like, I'm familiar with some HOAs that don't allow solar panels. You know, the older CCNRs prevented rooftop solar panels, and so, and now there's much more demand and need, and so those HOAs are themselves voluntarily bringing back amendments to their covenants and restrictions on their own, other than some homeowner challenging theirs. But for the city's role, from your perspective, we can't force CCNRs. They have to be in compliance with the state law. So I'm thinking, over time, these things will come in, you know, they will align, but some of the older HOAs that don't have active boards that are really monitoring their CCNRs, that could be an issue.
Okay, so if the state does adopt the WUI code, then they would need to, that would be a state law, so they would need to allow for...
It's, yeah, so the state building code, state building code council has the authority to adopt these codes on the state's behalf. That's the creation of this SBCC, and they have now, you know, whatever codes SBCC allows, then the cities can do their own local amendments to it, go through that whole process with the local amendments, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but that's, so, and under the WAC, they will have which portions of Wildland Interface they wanted to adopt. They adopted like a handful of things, including defensible space and structure hardening the last go-around. Then now they've rescinded all of those based on this new bill that got passed. So HOAs should, their private covenants and restrictions should be in compliance with the state law, but the boards will have to take the action to amend their own CCNRs. The cities can't force them to amend their CCNRs because they're private covenants.
Okay, and they aren't, that isn't a city, they don't have to be in compliance with the city?
That's correct. But if there's a new subdivision that goes in and they have their CCNRs, we would review it for compliance with the city codes and state law.
Okay.
But the older existing ones, we don't have the authority to mandate them to change them.
Okay. All right, so there was a slide about insurance, and I also had a question from a community member about that. It seems to me like, from what you presented, insurance is likely to use their own methods to determine, and so whether or not we use our own map or we wait until the DNR comes back with a map, is that going to impact insurance ratings or insurance ranking?
You know, I'm probably on my depth a little bit on it, but I do know in Oregon, when they did release wildfire risk maps, that insurance companies did end up dropping quite a few residents there in Oregon after the release of those maps. So, you know, either there was a different methodology, you know, but I do know that is, that is a concern, you know, with risk maps. I do believe there might have been some state legislation, too, about insurance companies. I'm looking around to see if anyone has any more information, because like I said, I might be a little, you know, out of my depth, but I can come back, you know, with more information to Chair Hunt. Also, I do want to say one more thing, too, about the cost. The county grant that they received, I actually wrote that grant application when I was still with the county, and it got funded, and so I was just pulling up my old files of when I did submit that grant. And back when I wrote it three years ago, we estimated somewhere between $30,000 to $40,000 for it. Now, that could, you know, that could vary now. I'm not quite sure what the, you know, climate is around the cost then, but at least that's what's within the county application.
Okay, and about a year of work was that?
Yeah. That, so for that grant, it funded, the whole process is about two years was the whole project, but again, that project's scope is larger than just the risk mapping, but probably from beginning to start. I think that's reasonable.
There's also an option in, I guess, the, it was mentioned that there's an option in the state law that, or what they are saying will be the state law, that once they release the maps, we would be able to change the maps? That, if we made our own maps, it seems like we could use that as an opportunity to come, like, to align the maps. Is that what they're...
I think we'll get a chance to actually, you know, have input directly on their maps, even maybe without having our own risk map to stand on, because my understanding of the code, too, is like, if we do develop our own risk map, we could adopt that, as long as the state agrees, right? They could say, okay, that's effectively your risk map, you know, so it might just be a gray-out area for Isqwa and be like, see your local jurisdiction or something like that.
Our understanding is that the House bill that got passed gives the city six additional months from the time that the state adopts these maps, and if we find inaccuracies or we want to change it. But if we previously adopted our own maps, then we have that opportunity to align the inputs. So we still would have to do an exercise if we adopted our maps earlier after the state comes out to make sure that the inputs are aligned.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you for answering all of those questions. Actually, sorry, before we move to check in on public comment, one more question. I know there's some work that Efer has been doing with homeowners to make sure that they know about their current options for protecting their homes. I wondered if you could tell us a little bit about that, and thank you so much again for being here as well.
First, I want to say I applaud the city for tackling this issue. It's a challenging issue, there's a lot at stake. It'd be easy to put it down the road, you know, and not want to tackle and ask these questions and navigate these waters. Eastside has a full-time person working on wildfire risk mitigation. We are working on our own community wildfire protection plan for our whole service area. We're already working with community partners, including City of Isiqua, North Bend, and others. It's a very interactive process. We spend a lot of time in conversation with those communities. We have a kickoff meeting in North Bend, I think, in a week or two. You know, there's quite a bit of effort to get everybody at the table to discuss kind of a holistic approach, matching up what their community interests are, concerns, what the science, what the mapping shows. We're very engaged in that. We're, have a program we launched last spring where we meet with individual property owners and also homeowner groups and neighbors who look at their individual property risk. We have a score sheet, and people can use that to apply for grants, reduce their wildfire risk. We're working with District 10, part of one of our partner agencies, to expand that program to some of the areas that they identify as high risk. But we're doing a lot in that area, and we look forward to working with Isiqua, regardless of which path you take at this point, and we want to continue that conversation.
Great, thank you. No, I don't have any more questions. Do you have any more? Okay. Thank you, thank you all. This time, I will check in if there are any members of the public online that might want to make a comment.
Chair Hunt, we have no members of the public online.
All right, and I will note again, there are no members of the public in council chambers. We will go past public comment and go to our discussion. Would you like to start off? Okay. All right, so it seems to me that over my time in the city over the last 10-plus years, we are having smokier summers, and it's definitely something that I'm much more aware of, the wildfire risk. And we are seeing the impacts of climate change with hotter days and more risk days, and that is projected to only get worse over time. So while I think we are in a difficult situation because of the, the kind of uncertainty that the state law and the state building code situation, you know, it's very murky to me, it seems like, but at the same time, I certainly feel like we do need to be proactive in making sure that we're, at the very least, giving homeowners options for preventing wildfire and for hardening their homes against wildfire, and hopefully also for new buildings and for new developments, making sure that they're protected as much as possible. So I'm not, you know, of these options, it does seem like there's not too much to be gained by doing our own maps in terms of time, but at the same time, I am interested in if there's measures we can take that would be, that would help protect our community against wildfire with the information we know. And also, we're at increased risk, the whole city is in the Wildland Urban Interface, so I think we know, we know enough to know that that risk is increasing, and we are going to have to be adopting these kinds of codes. And so I think getting ahead of it to the extent that we can is what I'm currently thinking, and I'm not sure that we have all of the information to know what options, sort of incremental steps we could take at this time, but that's, that's where, that's where I am right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I appreciate that we're bringing this up. We don't have to. We could just choose to wait, and so I appreciate daylighting it. I think it's important for our community to recognize that this is coming down the hill anyway, and so it's something that we're all going to have to be aware of. I really appreciate that we're going to be involved in state and county map creation that we're playing around with and trying to understand, okay, what does this mean for structural hardening, and how can this apply in a western side of the state environment? So I think because we've pointed out a, that, you know, just spending the money to create our own in a year versus a year and a half or two years, whatever it takes for the state and the county to create their own, and then have to modify our version so that it fits in, doesn't seem like the best solution. Similarly, when we're looking at it and trying to, you know, figure out, are there things that we can do, it sounds like there's still a lot of questions out there that are above our pay grade. Somebody needs to figure out something that's going to work out for the larger business community and the larger set of homeowners. I also don't want to get too far ahead of that, as far as the building community comes, because if we're out too far ahead, then builders that want to build or remodel in the area are going to have a lot of questions for community planning and development and building code around, can I do this? What's the best way to do that? So ultimately, I think I'm comfortable waiting for a state map, provided we're involved, provided there isn't anything that, as any decisions are made, that we feel like we could move ahead on. And then I think the... And then I think the other piece that we haven't talked about as much, most of this has been structural hardening, is the defensive space. And that is just a huge, big item related to our tree canopy and all of the houses on the hillside that plus enforcement. There's, there's some big questions there. So as we go through that, I really want to be able to talk to some of the HOAs or some of the building community, just to understand, what is that going to be like on the ground? Because from my perspective, that's just a huge problem area of trying to enforce and trying to explain to homeowners, I'm sorry, you have to cut down trees and vegetation, even though we have a tree canopy goal that we're trying to hit. It, it just, there's a lot there. And so I just want to make sure that we're aware of that and prepared to have those conversations with the community as it comes through. Yeah, I think those were all of my thoughts.
Based on the past discussions on the defensible space, it seems to me like that was likely to be, it continued to be a voluntary part of the code and the structural hardening and the driveway turnarounds, those were the, going to be the mandatory parts? Is that, is that the read on those questions?
That is correct. So even before the bill passed, the RCW only had the structural hardening. It's a little bit sloppy language in there because it references 2018 codes and that's 2021. This bill did clean that portion up, but, and they also, this bill also tied the SBCC's role. My, our understanding is to only adopt the structural hardening pieces. Previously, SBCC had adopted the structural hardening as well as the defensible space requirements. But the RCW was only talking about the mandatory provision of structural hardening, which is what we brought forward for council's adoption previously.
Okay. And is, is that because the structural hardening is expected to be sort of the first tier and more important for lower levels?
Possibly, that was their thought process, yeah. But now, as, you know, the way this bill is written, SBCC can only, has only authorized to approve the, or adopt the structure hardening. So there's some limitation on what SBCC could adopt as far as defensible space requirements. We'll see where SBCC lands. I'm sure it'll be further discussed and debate. For now, their emergency rule just wiped out the whole thing that they'd adopted.
Okay. So it, it seems to me like we are very likely headed towards having those, a version of the structural hardening in the near future be required, and then the...
After the maps are adopted. So the way this bill said, only, you know, this SBCC can adopt the structural hardening after DNR adopts, you know, comes up with these maps.
Right. But based on existing maps, we expect that we will be at, at a level of risk for wildfire, and so we will...
Yeah, I think we, we confuse the matter a little bit. The, the WUI maps are really telling you where the intermix areas are, which for Issaquah is the entire thing. The hazard maps lay it as low risk, high, medium, high risk. So that, that sort of map currently doesn't exist. So even if you adopt the structure hardening, that's the irony of all of this, that really, the way it's written, it's like, if you have low risk, this is what you do. If you have medium risk, you can't really implement them because you don't have the low, medium, high categorizations in the maps at the, at the moment.
Yeah, just one more piece. As we've gone through all of this conversation, I think, as we're looking at the timeline, there's this big question of when do we come back? Even if we're pushing it off and deciding to wait for the state codes, I think it would be important to explain to the rest of the council why we have to reverse out of the WUI code, considering we just went through that adoption. So we can blame it all on the state, that's fine.
Sure, how would you like that portion, that we have to take some action of rescinding that section? Do you, so we'll need your recommendation, like, do we go to council with that first step, second step, third step? I think that'll be good to know.
So I, I think there's partly a legal question. If, if we absolutely need to do it right away, that would be one thing. If we do have a little bit of time, it sounded to me like there was a possibility that some parts of it, we, we could adopt, maybe, maybe not, but, you know, like the driveways, the turnaround piece, so...
Or portions of the structure hardening, is your question?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think our, our understanding is it's, that whole bundle is one bundle. So we either adopt the whole thing or, or not. But we can confirm with legal, if you are interested in adopting the structure hardening without the ventilation piece, is that where the committee's landing?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Let me, let me make some observations. You and your colleagues in the council are clearly frustrated by the ability of us as a city to protect our residents in the case of fire. And so what we have before you tonight as the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee are code issues. There is all the work that we do outside of the code to educate our community on risks and encourage them to do things voluntarily above and beyond what's in the code. I think it would probably make good sense to have this discussion, perhaps at a committee of the whole, and lean into the what are we doing now part? What can we do? And as Jared mentioned, there's, there's community planning that started. We can talk more about that. We can talk more about how we can get communities involved. We can also talk about how we can start engaging HOAs now, because we know it's coming down the pike. And if we can have those discussions with them, and, you know, for those where there are requirements that prohibit different kind of roofing materials, siding materials, have those discussions, and then also come back with the code pieces, explain, there's, I think, a fair list of questions that you've raised this evening, you know, perhaps cover those as well at a committee of the whole rather than coming back to this committee, and then come back at a meeting after that with whatever code changes would make sense. Because I think what I'm hearing from you tonight is the frustration of what are we doing to protect our residents today? Not so much, you know, the understanding that, yes, these maps have to be done and that the legislature continues to change their mind, but that's not protecting Issaquah residents in the process. So we have a committee of the whole in the month of May that we probably could put this item on for a larger discussion. We could come back at that meeting with the answer of some of the technical questions that Mr. Dolly Wall has been quizzing you on, if you'd like information, and have that broader discussion with the full council, and then come back, perhaps at the May 20 meeting, and I, Jared, if that would be soon enough, for council action, any code changes, and then come back on May 20. But, you know, clearly, this council's made it very clear over the last year or two, your concern, as, as the chair has mentioned, we see more smoke in the summertime. I mean, just reasonable, people are saying, gosh, this is getting worse. What are we doing? What is the city doing? And I think we can have that discussion. And perhaps, again, come back to you with some strategies with the HOAs, and back to you with some strategies on additional community awareness. Because if there are residents that are concerned that are looking for tools, we can provide them with tools, give them some examples of setbacks, and if they themselves want to take that on for their individual property, then be supportive of that. And then as the other code issues come around, and we'll deal with that and the enforcement of that stuff. How's that sound?
I think that sounds good. I did want to clarify, not frustrated with any of the, any of the great work that is going on, on this topic, and, and as Council President said, you know, this, we're looking at this proactively, and I'm very grateful for that. It's more maybe concerned, because we are hearing about wildfires in, you know, in other states on the West Coast, and we are increasingly seeing smokier summers. And so I think it's more just making sure that we are doing, doing what we can to provide options for our community to protect ourselves.
And absolutely. I mean, we're, we're frustrated, too. And, you know, we're dealing with climate change and issues that are beyond our control. But at the end of the day, our residents, you know, are at greater risk today probably than they were in the past. So what can we do to empower them as the state of Washington, first through all? So if that works for staff, we'll come back at the committee of the whole on May 13th with that broader discussion, come back with the answers to these questions, and then the appropriate code amendments.
Yeah, I'll just note, I really appreciate that, because otherwise, the, there's explanation to the rest of the council on why we are reversing something, and then there's potentially a year and a half or two years before we really take any action. And so being able to have an interim point, which allows us to explore other avenues and other methods that we could do, I think does appreciate the situation that we're in.
Yeah, I agree with that. I also think shining more light on the options that folks have currently as voluntary options to, to help prevent forest fire and to harden their homes would be, would be good to make sure that we're getting the message out to folks. It is something that I, I hear people are more worried about now. There is increased risk, and I think there are also some resources available. So it'd be great to just, you know, review and make sure that we're getting the word out to, to folks about what those options are. And I do think the HOA piece, that would be really good to get ahead of, because if the state is, as, as they're indicating, the state is indicating that they are going to be making these changes. And so I think getting them ready for that and also letting them know about the risk that we are seeing and about these being the, you know, the best practices for materials that are fire resistant, and, you know, working through that with them would be good to start that process as well. So yes, I think that, that sounds good. And I think that will give us, as long as it isn't, as long as we don't have a timing issue, that would give us time to talk to the full council before we did the... That would be the timing, correct?
So, so again, Madam Chair, Council President, I think if we go back to the questions that were asked then, so we would not pursue a map at this time...
I think, I think they're right. They're, oh, your question.
So what I hear the committee saying is that the recommendation would be to wait on the adoption of the urban interface code until the state building code council adopts the code, that the city would not pursue creation of its own map. But we would come back to the committee of the whole with the answers to some of the questions that were raised, and then give a, a more broader overview of additional work we're doing on code work.
Yes, I think that's right. And additionally, I would request non-code options for communication and for voluntary things that people could do if they're additional.
And I, and I think that Mr. Snyder is well underway with that. I think, again, that was not really the topic before you this evening, so we'll make sure that out of the committee of the whole, we come back and provide much more detail on the operational side of...
Okay. All right, thank you for, for that. Have any additional comments or other things? Okay. I don't have any additional comments. Do, do you have what you need on this item? Okay, great. Then that was our only item of business this evening. So if we have any, if you have any announcements, then we will be adjourned at 7:34 PM. Thank you so much.